Good morning. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I am the Chair of this committee. And we are joined today by Councilmembers Gordon Reich, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Andrew Johnson, and Councilmembers Yang Quincy Goodman Frye and Palmasano. We are a quorum of this committee. So we have two items on our agenda for today. Both of these items are very significant items, and so we have planned that we will have a longer-than-usual meeting of the Committee of the Whole in anticipation of the magnitude of these items. The first item is a report from the Workplace Regulations Partnership Group. To give a little bit of background on this issue, the city in 2015, both through the mayor's, state of the city, as well as through an accompanying resolution adopted by the city council shortly after that in April of 2015, had indicated a desire to work on a number of workplace policies and to explore those issues. And this was in recognition of the city's history of supporting policies that created fair, safe, and healthy standards for working people and our desire to look at how we might take that work further. The issues we talked about in 2015 included earned sick time, fair scheduling, preventing wage theft, and exploring economic impacts around increasing living wages. In the fall of 2015, the council determined to focus on getting an ordinance proposal relating or a proposal relating to earned sick time, and also at that time adopted a resolution that was made on a motion of Council President Barbara Johnson, as well as Councilmember Andrew Johnson, to form a Workplace Regulations Partnership Group. Since that time, I just want to say we are here to hear the product of that work group. But this has just been a tremendous amount of work that has come forward from a group of volunteers that represented a broad spectrum of employee and worker and worker advocacy organization and labor, as well as businesses, small and large, and business associations coming together to express their opinions in that group. We're going to hear about their process. They had a lot of work that they did together in terms of listening sessions that happened all around the city, and then a very large number of business meetings where they engaged in passionate but really respectful conversation. I came into those meetings many times, and I was just amazed at both how people were able to very firmly express their ideas but do so in a respectful way. I wanted just to take a moment because I'll tell you, as we kind of get through the presentation and get into discussion, sometimes these moments are lost, to say a thank you to people who have spent so much time working on these issues. And so I wanted to read through the names of the Workplace Partnership members. And truthfully, it's hard to express how much work these folks did in a very compressed timeframe. So they really gave a lot of their time. And we are also presenting the Workplace Partnership members with some certificates from the city of Minneapolis, just as a way to express our appreciation for truly the large amount of work that you did and the product that you are giving to us today. So the list that I have includes members Susie Brown, who was representing a business association, the Minnesota Council of Nonprofits; Steve Kramer, representing a business association, the Minneapolis Downtown Council; Faisal Muhammad, who is an employer with his business Optima Health; Liz Doyle, an employee representative from Take Action Minnesota; Brian Elliott, representing Organized Labor with the Service Employees International Union; Dana Frank, who is an employer and her business is First Avenue; Molly Glasgow, with a business association, which is Twin Cities Metro IBA; Chelsea Globitz, who is with Organized Labor, representing Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation; Ron Harris, who is an employee representative, representing Neighborhoods Organizing for Change; Tony Lacroix, who is with an employer, Abbott Northwestern Hospital; Guillermo Alexander Lindsay, who is an employee representative, and he is also connected with Centro de Trabajadores Unidos en Lucha; Wade Lunberg, who is with Organized Labor, representing Unite Here Local 17; Christopher Pennick, who is an employee representative, working for a business called Zero Rex, Zero Res, excuse me, of Minnesota; Jim Rouda, who is an employer representative with Target Incorporated; Danny Schwartzman, who is an employer representative, his business is Common Roots Cafe and Catering. And then we also had four alternates who participated fully in all of the listening sessions and discussion of the business meetings. And they include Stephanie Gaska, who is representing an employee organization, Organized Labor, excuse me, with Centro de Trabajadores Unidos en Lucha; Abdi Abdi Ramin Kahin, who is an employer, his business is Afro Deli; Bruce Nustad, who is with the Minnesota Retailers Association, which is a business association; and finally, Sarah Webster Norton, she is an employee representative currently with Betty Danger's Country Club. And again, we just really want to thank you. I wanted to take the opportunity to read through those lists of names because these folks have just done tremendous work. And then the last thank you that I want to give before we get into the report itself is to recognize that we also had a large number of city staff members who really committed an incredible amount of time to ensure that this partnership group was fully supported, had the accommodations that it needed and the resources that it needed to have good discussion. And I just want to mention, in particular, Muria Rivera, who is the Deputy City Coordinator; Casey Carl, our city clerk; Gretchen Musikant, who is our Commissioner of Health; David Rubedor, with the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department; and the group's facilitator, whose name is Luke Weisberg. But we also had many employees from, and here are just the departments, the City Attorney's Office, the City Clerk's Office, the Civil Rights Department, CPED Health Department, our Intergovernmental Relations Department, and then many connected from the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department. So thank you for allowing me to spend this time to thank so many who have participated in the work that we're about to hear about today. And I also want to acknowledge that we have been joined by Mayor Hodges, who is here today. We've also been joined by a few more councilmembers, Councilmember Orsami, Councilmember Bender, and I think I mentioned everyone else. All right. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to our Deputy City Coordinator to give us some introduction, and then we will turn to hearing directly from the Chair and Vice Chair of the Workplace Partnership Group.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Muria Rivera Vandermeide, and I am the Deputy City Coordinator for the city of Minneapolis. As Council Vice President Glidden has indicated, this work has certainly, this group has been working hard over the past few months to put forward thoughtful recommendations concerning earned sick time. When we convened the group, we said we'd be pushing them hard and asking them to be present and to come to meetings, to be engaged and ready to listen to a variety of viewpoints on the topic. And I believe I speak on behalf of all the staff involved that we could not have asked for more from this group. They came to the listening sessions, they came actively engaged in the work, and they certainly challenged us and each other to have thoughtful discussion on the elements of the policy that you're about to hear. What we all learned from this work is that it's complex and requires balance, that as we strive to protect those who often lack the ability to advocate for more protections, we also have to at the same time ensure that we're fostering a strong and thriving business environment. At the first business meeting, the group adopted operating principles and protocols that called for the selection of a Chair and a Vice Chair. And so shortly, I'll turn over the presentation to Liz Doyle and Jim Rouda, who hold those respective positions for the group. But before I do, I want to echo the words of Council Vice President Glidden and echo a thanks to staff, including our trusty facilitator behind me, Luke Weisberg, and acknowledge the hard work they put in to support this effort. They were just as engaged and committed to the work as the partnership group, and it was critical and supporting to move this process forward in such a tight timeline. We heard on Monday, as this group cast their formal vote on the recommendations, how much this process and the interaction with staff has really opened their eyes to see how deeply committed staff are to serving the community. And I know that we know how valuable our staff is, but it's always nice to publicly lift up those efforts and to acknowledge the exemplary public service that our staff brings to the table each and every day. So with that, I'll hold you, I'll leave you with the presentation and invite Liz Doyle to come up. I'll ask that you hold questions, if possible, until the end so that they can get through their presentation, because I know it's going to generate a lot of conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera Vandermeide, and welcome, Ms. Doyle.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to join you this morning and provide a report. I'll be joined with Jim Rouda, who will be covering some of the slides here to talk about the work we've done over the last number of weeks and few months, both hearing from people across the city about the issue of paid sick time and the deliberations that happened within the Workplace Partnership Group. So just to begin with sort of a-
And I just want to kind of ask our media folks, okay, here we are. We have the presentation now up for everyone to see.
Great. So just to begin with a sort of reminder of the overall problem that this group was trying to solve. So one being that we have over 100,000 people working in the city of Minneapolis that have no ability to take paid time off when they're sick. More than a third of the workers in Minneapolis work in industries where there's a particularly high public health risk exposure. That's healthcare, education, and food service and hospitality. So that's about a third of our workforce is working in those particular sectors. And those who don't have access to paid time off when they're ill are disproportionately low-wage workers, workers of color, workers who are not firmly or are tenuously attached to the labor market in the city. And it's because of these reasons that we're seeing over 20 cities and across the country that have chosen to enact paid sick days laws, paid sick laws, to address these problems. So just a reminder of the charge that was given to the Workplace Regulations Group from the council. It was three parts to that. So the first was to study the impact of policy proposals related to workplace regulations and considering the regional and cross-jurisdictional issues connected with that. The second was to engage the community, and we'll talk more about how we did that. And then finally, to report final policy proposals to the Committee of the Whole. The composition of our group, Councilmember Glidden went through the names, but again, we had 15 voting and four non-voting members who really were a balance of employee and employer representatives from a variety of sectors across the city, including retail, restaurant, and healthcare. During an abbreviated period of a couple of weeks, we held 14 listening sessions across the city, with more than 500 people participating in those sessions. And then we held 11 business meetings that went through Monday of this week to deliberate, talk about the policy issues, talk about what we had heard from those listening sessions. This gives you kind of a picture of the breadth of the listening sessions that we did around the city and the kinds of constituencies that we were able to bring into that process. So as you'll see, there's a pretty wide range of sectors that engaged in the listening sessions: construction, manufacturing, franchise restaurants, healthcare organizations. We were able to reach to a variety of constituencies too, in the Hmong community, Latino community, Native American community. We hosted public sessions that were just open to the public, both on the north side and the south side of Minneapolis. And so as you can see here, I think this was really a concerted effort to hear from a broad diversity of voices across Minneapolis, both employers, employees, other community groups, and community representatives to talk about what this could look like for the city. I'll just talk about some of the key themes that we heard from those listening sessions. So no surprise, probably, the inability of employees to take paid time off really has very significant impact on both an individual's health and their family's health. "Do I work or do I eat?" was a commonly expressed sentiment, particularly when we heard from low-wage employees in the city who really can't afford to take a day off when they're ill if that day off is not paid. And so that's a really sort of common trade-off that low-wage employees in the city are facing. Do I go to work sick, or do I try to bypass those wages? And doing so can be really challenging for meeting their other basic family budget needs. It was also clear that there's some informal time off policies, mostly unpaid time off policies, that exist with some employers in the city. For the most part, it sounds like those are mostly for the individual, and one of the most common situations, needs that individual workers have is to take time off to care, for example, for example, a sick child. So some of those policies exist, but they're somewhat limited in how individuals can use them. We also heard a lot about the larger, what I would call like a ripple effect across Minneapolis of not having access to paid time off. So a story that we heard when we were at the public meeting in South Minneapolis was about a school social worker who works in Minneapolis Public Schools, who talked about the fact that she has children that come into the school every day, and from the moment they get off the bus, clearly they're sick, and clearly they should be home for the day. But that parent is unable to take the time off, so those children end up spending the day at the nurse's office. And the social worker often will be able to reach the parent, but the parent is unable to go and pick that child up from school, because they either can't take the time off at all, or they're unable to afford even taking a couple hours off to care for a sick child. We also heard from some individuals in the homeless community about how frequent it is for someone who's experiencing homelessness to talk about the fact that one of the triggers that ended, resulted in that individual being homeless was some kind of a health issue, where they were unable to take the time off that they needed and be able to hold on to their job. So it really sort of painted a picture, I think, of the implications for the city and for the well-being of Minneapolis residents and the economic vitality of the city really extend far beyond just that individual who needs access to time off. We also heard a lot about retaliation. So I think this is one issue that we'll, we've talked about in the recommendations, but it's very, very commonly stated, particularly among low-wage employees in the city, that they are concerned about taking time off could result in them losing a job, having their hours cut, other retaliatory measures against them. So it's a consideration as we look at constructing a policy and how to ensure that those employees are protected from retaliation. A few things that were pretty clear themes as we talked to employers. So one is there are employers across the city who have comprehensive paid time off policies, and it's in the interest of, I think, everyone to make sure that sick time ordinance here in Minneapolis respects and aligns with those comprehensive policies. We'll talk about a little more on that when we talk through the recommendations. Secondly, we heard about employers just wishing to minimize administrative burdens and administrative complexity for a earned sick time ordinance and have some protection against if there is misuse of earned sick time on the part of the employee. We also heard a lot from smaller employers, especially micro-employers, which we end up defining as one to three employees. Those smaller employers having, facing more difficulty covering costs and shifts and handling some of the administrative tracking issues, which is also something we ended up considering in the policy recommendations. So I think overall, this set of listening sessions left us with the ongoing challenge of how do we address the public health concerns and meet the needs of employees who do not have access to paid sick time, and doing that in a way that also minimizes administrative burdens and costs for employers. This is a detailed graphic here, but this was a very helpful tool that Luke, our facilitator, created to provide guidance for the work groups tackling of the different policy issues. So it starts by naming what are our overall guiding objectives: improving public health, improving employee health and labor conditions, and also improving the business climate, where we can attract and retain good employees in Minneapolis. And then the second part of this lays out what are the topics that we tackled in order to construct those policy recommendations: scope of the policy, how the time may be used, how it would be accrued, how the individual earns that time, and how the policy would be monitored and evaluated going over time. So now I'm going to turn it over to our Vice Chair, Jim Rouda, to talk about each of those, or at least the first three of those policy issues and the recommendations that we developed on them. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. Save the best for the lawyer in the group, huh? So we organized our work into four categories: scope, usage, accrual mechanism, and then monitoring enforcement, and implementation. This was, this was, this was really kind of the hard guts work. I think even though the listening sessions were, from a time standpoint, really hard, they were also so rewarding, because we were all in different parts of the city, listening to great stories, you know, meeting all kinds of different people, and it was great to go through that. Then we had to come back and really roll up our sleeves and slog through these very, you know, difficult but very important issues in terms of how this might shape up. So with regard to scope, we could flip the, oh, thank you. That's why we have facilitator. With regard to scope, we came to the, to the conclusion that all employees working in the city of Minneapolis should be covered, as long as they work at least 80 hours in a year for a given employer to be covered by this policy. We also came to the conclusion that employers are responsible for providing paid sick time to eligible employees regardless of the location of the employer. We spent quite a bit of time talking through these two points together. I think it reflects a balance of a lot of different viewpoints. There was a lot of research certainly provided to the group in terms of other existing ordinances throughout the country, and, but this is where a clear majority of the group settled on these two very important issues, which really had to be settled, we figured out early on before we started to tackle other issues, which I'll go through now. In terms of some accommodations that are very important to point out, micro-employers, we had a lot of discussion about small business in general, and then we separated that out into these two categories of micro-employers and small employers. So micro-employers are ones that have three or less covered employees, and we came to the balanced conclusion that they should be bound by the protections that are provided in whatever policy or ordinance the city council comes up with, but they should have the discretion about providing that leave as either paid or unpaid. One of the important issues there to point out would be that the protection against retaliation was deemed so important that it should apply to all employers regardless of size. With regard to small employers, a lot of discussion here too, and again, with, I think, some benchmarks on other ordinances, looking at a number of 24 or fewer employees, that we settled on the accommodation that they should have at least an additional six months of time to implement the policy. And as you'll see later, that's based on an assumption that we would at least see a six-month period of time for all employers to implement, implement the policy after enactment of the ordinance. So now let's move on to usage. We really, I think there was a, there was a very strong sentiment here about being broader rather than narrow, and using a broad definition of family and household, which is, I think, we found consistent with most employers' practices. We also had some very specific discussion about how this should probably follow the definition found in the city of Minneapolis, civil service rules with regard to definition of a family member. We also had a lot of conversation, and there was broad consensus about having a broad usage concept with regard to physical and mental illness, and also supportive of the concept that usage of sick time for safety leave would be important, consistent with Minnesota statute on that issue. With regard to, again, a good example of the balance that everybody was, was very cognizant of here, we had a lot of conversation about documentation in general, and there's overwhelming, I think, information and opinion from the medical community that requiring documentation in general in these sick leave policies is not helpful, certainly for the, for the, for the healthcare community. It's not a good use of medical and hospital resources to have people coming to a medical facility to get a note because they were sick for one day. On the other hand, we also talked about abuse and the potential that some, some folks could engage in a clear pattern of abuse, and what would you do? And that would be the appropriate situation where an employer could require documentation. And then we also talked that, to keep it simple for employers and consistent with existing policies that employees would be able to use sick time in the increments consistent with their current business and payroll practice. For example, in the same way that you would use, if you could use vacation in certain increments, you would use the sick time in the same type of increments, depending on We thought it was important, and this is a good example of balance, again, employees should be, be able to earn the sick time when their employment begins, but on the other hand, they shouldn't be able to use it until 90 days of their employment has passed. I think this also addresses issues that were raised throughout the business and employer community with regard to the hiring of seasonal workers during holiday times or summer workers during the summertime, also dealing with industries that experience high levels of turnover, so that you're not spending a lot of energy tracking and trying to administer a sick time practice for a lot of employees who just may not ever be availing themselves of that, of that sick time. Trying to focus the usage on the people that will use it more frequently and, as opposed to very occasionally. But there was a lot of conversation on this point, and I think it really did go after that balance aspect, trying to deal with all those different issues. And this is also something I think is very common in many of the other ordinances you see. The next point is extremely important. We clearly heard in listening sessions across the city from all sizes of employers that certain employers have developed sick leave and broader paid time off programs that they feel are generous and accommodate all the different types of needs that their employees need, in terms of in the greater concept of time off. And there was a big concern that something about this ordinance would upset those plans or make those plans, you know, obsolete. So after a lot of conversation and also doing some benchmarking with other ordinances, but, you know, quite frankly, really within our group, very strong consensus that, that existing employer policies will be in, should be deemed in compliance with whatever the ordinance is, as long as they offer the access and utilization of compensated leave at the same rate and amount or greater than the hours of leave provided by the ordinance, and also allow the employee to use the compensated leave for the same purposes. We had some good conversation also in this context about encouraging the city, city's ordinance, if passed, to take a more liberal approach in terms of how this is interpreted. We found in the listening sessions that these types of programs are varied. There's not just one size fits everybody. Everybody's come up with a variety of different types of programs. They're very proud of them. You hear from both their employees and their, and the, and the owners or the employers that they have a lot of energy and feel good about these plans, and they have a lot invested in these plans, and they just didn't want to see them disrupted. So we're hoping that, that for the most part, it would be the exception rather than the rule, that these existing plans can meet the requirements of this ordinance. So with regard to accrual mechanism, I'll tick these off fairly quickly. Paid sick time would be earned at the rate of one hour for every 30 hours worked. Employers would be allowed, though, annually to place a cap on that accrual rate at 48 hours. And then, from an overall standpoint- And then, from an overall standpoint, employees can carry over their accrued hours year to year for unused time, but they can only do that up to 80 hours total of accrued time. So essentially, being able to bank up to 80 hours at any given time. Employers would not be required to pay out unused time upon termination of employment. And quite frankly, for, for some employers, you know, that's an important concept. And also even from a public health standpoint, there, there are dynamics where that might actually discourage the use of the sick time. So we just wanted to make clear that the, that we didn't think the ordinance should require that payout. Certainly, employers could choose to do that. And then we also talked about how do you account for exempt or salaried employees? Because typically, they, their, their hours are not tracked. So then the question was, well, then how would you, how would you deal with their accrual rate? And so we came up with the solution that if you're an exempt or salaried employee, you would generally be considered to work 40 hours a week for purposes of accrual, unless there was just some clear evidence that you didn't do that. So again, the exception rather than the rule is that they would automatically be considered working 40 hours a week. Liz is going to finish us up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Router.
Okay, so to pick up the final piece of this, which is the enforcement and implementation, several concepts that came out of our conversation on that. So one is a broad education effort to help both employers and employees understand the implication of the policy, what it means for them. Having a single point of contact within the city that employers and employees can both, can call in order to address issues that come up or get further clarity on what their responsibilities are or what they're eligible for. Explicit protection from retaliation, we talked about that already. Transparent notification, and there's more details in the actual recommendation, including written notice and workplace posting. An annual outcome evaluation reported to residents, businesses, employees, and other stakeholders to evaluate how the policy is going, how it's meeting its overall goals. An ongoing partnership approach that includes a stakeholder group that could review that policy and make recommendations over time if there's improvements that employees or employers or other community stakeholders are interested in. Compliance efforts that are consistent with the city practice. We spent some time looking at the Department of Civil Rights and the tools available to the Department of Civil Rights. So being able to have the sort of a full array of tools that the city currently has, as well as, or including the ability to prevent licensees for contracting for services if that contractor has failed to comply with the ordinance. And finally, an enactment of the policy being at least six months following its passage for employers overall. And then, as Jim had mentioned earlier, an additional six months for small employers. So a small employer would have a full year to implement the policy. And that's just to make sure that employers have both an understanding of what their responsibilities are and enough time to make system changes in order to meet the new requirements. There was a few supplemental recommendations we included in the report. These were other ideas that were outside of sort of the scope of a paid sick ordinance, strictly speaking, but that came in, that came out of the conversation. And so we wanted to include in the report. One is an effort around strengthening the city's efforts in supporting small businesses and their ability to start up in the city, grow and thrive in the city, and be able to navigate some of the city processes. A second one, there was some conversation and some interest that came out of the listening session, looking forward, looking into the future on a citywide payroll tax mechanism. It's obviously something that would require state legislative change, so it's not something that's immediately actionable, but was, was a concept that came out of listening session. Third, we, we did hear a lot from individuals who are, would be interested in using sick time for bereavement purposes, and so wanted to forward that idea for your consideration. And then finally, there's a fair number of nonprofit entities in the city whose funding is primarily through government funds. And so we wanted to recommend that perhaps the city could help lend some support to efforts to increase those reimbursement rates at the state level in order to provide more resources to those employers to be able to cover the costs of offering sick time that they may not offer right now. So I think, as a whole, we feel like these recommendations are a balanced approach that provide access to sick time for individuals who need it, while also minimizing the administrative burdens on employers and really recognizing the diversity of the employer community in Minneapolis. And then, thirdly, that it creates an ongoing partnership in the, for community stakeholders to, again, review that policy and identify areas for improvement going forward. Broad support for these recommendations. We voted on the recommendations on Monday. We had 13 individuals vote yes, one no, and one abstention. So we have a balance of employer and employee representatives that stood in strong support of these recommendations. So finally, we wanted to just thank the city council for creating this group and providing the opportunity for us to participate in it and would encourage members of the council to adopt these recommendations as a policy framework as you move forward on a paid sick ordinance in Minneapolis. I want to echo the thanks given to both city residents, who came in large numbers to the listening sessions and offered feedback online and at those listening sessions, employees and business owners who participated in the effort. And then again, members of the Workplace Partnership Group and the very talented staff for the city of Minneapolis that put a lot of time and talent into this effort, and that was very much appreciated. We will stop there for questions. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for this report and really appreciate the time that you took to walk us through both your process and some of the, I think, major categories of recommendations. I wanted to just kind of give a heads up to my council colleagues as well as to the partnership group. But clearly, the next steps are in the hands of the city council in terms of how to act and move forward. And there is some work in drafting a staff direction to put that in motion. And I think we will see that at this Friday's council meeting. So we are anticipating there will be a direction that essentially dictates how to move forward with some next steps. I wanted to open the floor to some questions. And I want to say, too, this is your opportunity to my colleagues to ask, you know, what was some of the dialogue that helped arrive at the recommendations? Because I know there was a lot. Or to dig into topics that weren't addressed in the presentation itself. And I am on speaker management, although I'm kind of looking down the line here. And I see Councilmember Gordon. I'm not sure I see anybody else yet. And I have some questions, so. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. And I really appreciate all the work that everybody did on this. It's great to get the report back. And congratulations. And you'll probably miss one another now that you don't get to see so much of each other. So we may have to call you back to help us. I, I did have a couple of questions. I was curious about any research that went into creating that micro, small business category and why the line was drawn. Was it at three or fewer? I know there had been some talk of 10, or, I mean, depending on who you are, starting a business, it can feel micro for a pretty long time. And I was especially curious if it looked like there was a large jump at three or if you did any kind of assessment on what are the smallest and midsize? If you could talk about that just a bit.
Okay. So I think we didn't have a report research on that number, but I think where that number came out of is a set of conversations with small employers as well as the small employer representatives that were on the Workplace Partnership Group in considering what is a number that feels that an employer may really struggle to fill a shift or to be able to pay an individual for an unfilled shift. And so after a set of conversations on that, the one to three employees is the number that we felt was appropriate to both balance the needs of that small employer with wanting to be cautious to not increase that number such that it was detracting from the overall public health goals and overall worker well-being goals of the, of an ordinance overall.
And that's one to three, part-time? Any hours? Is that correct?
Part-time, full-time wouldn't matter. It's really, they wouldn't be covered unless they worked, until they worked 80 hours in, in a year. So, I mean, it was, on this issue, it was a little bit more art than science. And I think-